Okay, it's about 6:00 and we're going to get started with the program. On behalf of California incident management team one, I'd like to welcome you and thank you for coming out tonight for a briefing on the status of the rim fire. Our team took over command of the fire on Wednesday, transitioning with the team from the southeast who was here during the very difficult days that you all experienced. What we want to do tonight is, we know that you've been living with smoke, you've seen the 80% containment, which sounds good, but then I know you've been seeing those big columns go up every other day, and we wanted you to know exactly what's going on, provide you a very detailed briefing on our operations to tie this big fire up. So, that's what we're here to do tonight. In a few minutes, Jerry McGowan, our incident commander, will be giving you that briefing. Jerry's from Tuolumne County, right down the road here in Sonora. I want to point out a few people who are in the audience. Susan Skolski, the forest supervisor, is going to do a welcoming here in just a minute, and she's right up front here. I know Kelly Martin from the National Park Service, I haven't seen her yet actually, I think she's just driving in. So, a long drive around from Yosemite, she'll be here to answer if you have any questions about the national park side of things. Also, I want to make you aware of two teams that have arrived to look ahead into the post-fire recovery. The Stanislas National Forest has brought in a team of experts called the Burned Area Emergency Response Team, and Todd Ellsworth is here, he's the team leader. Todd, I don't see you right off way in the back over there. So, they're going to be around for several weeks assessing the post-fire conditions and determining if there's any emergency things that need to be done after the fire. The National Park Service has also brought in a bear team, and Chris Holbeck is in the back right here. They will be coordinating their efforts across the boundaries between the park and the forest. The Tuolumne County Supervisor's Office, we had Randy Handlat and Carl, excuse me if I get your name wrong, Roderfer, excuse me, and then Craig Pedro is here from Office of Emergency Services. So, if there's some questions related to the county and their emergency operations, we'll hand it over to those folks. Also, with CAL FIRE, we have Scott Freeman and Fred Lopez, who are over, this is Fred over here, and Scott's around somewhere. So, if we have CAL FIRE questions, they'll be available to answer those. Thanks. Okay, what we'd like to do, the way we'd like to run this is, we'll have the presentations, and Jerry will give you the overview after Susan speaks, and then hold your questions till afterwards, and then we will spend a lot of time trying to give you, get you the answers to the questions that you have. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Susan for opening comments. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's a beautiful evening for a meeting, isn't it? Perfect weather. The reason why we wanted to have this meeting up the 108 corridor is because we know the last couple of days, this fire has been pumping a lot of smoke up the 108 corridor, which certainly has increased calls to various dispatch centers, with a lot of folks expressing concern over what is the fire doing, is it outside the perimeter, are we going to have to be under advisory notification again? So, we really felt that by having it up here, we could help alleviate some folks' concerns, and also just let folks know what is the status of the fire, what is it doing? When it is pumping up smoke like that, and you can see a big column from a long ways away, is it cause for concern? Do we know what it's doing? Is it within the perimeter or not? So, we're going to cover that for you tonight, hopefully alleviate some concerns over that. It certainly doesn't alleviate the smoke issue. I think we are all very, very tired of having to live in the smoke like we have been for the last few days, and, well, actually for the last several weeks, depending on where you live. So, Jerry McGowan will talk about what's happening with the smoke plume and other spots that we're getting out there, and then, like Richard said, we're going to open it up for questions, and we have a variety of expertise here that should hopefully be able to answer your questions on all things rim fire. So, thank you very much for coming, we really, really appreciate it. Jerry's stuck in his chair.
Good evening, folks, can you all hear me?
Yep.
All right, good. Matt, here's a test. Can you see this?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm going to give you a tour around the fire and talk about all the things that is current, not of the past, but what we currently have around the fire here. As we start out in here in this area here on Paper Cabin Ridge, this is all looking good in the sense of no heat, no smoke against the line, that's big, it's holding. So, as we come up into this area, into Wet Meadow and all that right here, and this is what we call, they took away my, I do fire linguinees, you know, where you call Division Delta Echo at Foxtrot, they don't have these on this map, and I got that in my mind here. So, I'm just going to use geographics. So, up here on Paper Cabin Ridge, along here, and right in this corner here is called Wet Meadow, and all this, this area is looking very, very good in the sense that there's not heat. When I say very good, and I'm trying to describe this fire to you, paint that picture to you, one of the things is, is that this is all holding and looking very good. When you saw, how many saw the plume here a couple of days ago? Raise your hands, y'all saw it, I know. Kind of a rhetorical question, I get it. But you know what, that was here. That was a big area here, some of my friends called that the donut hole, all that. That was about 10,000 acres out there. What we did a couple of nights ago, we took and used aerial and dropped some ignition devices right up on these ridges right here, and that thing started backing off and getting away from this line here. We had a lot of spot fires in the last few days, as my PIO was talking, we took this fire on last Wednesday, and there was quite a few spot fires, but the firefighters out there are doing a very, very good job, and picked all those up right up in here. We had to get this thing out of here, so what we did is we dropped the balls and all that kind of stuff on these ridge lines and let it work its way back down and get it away from the line. It worked. And the thing is, is the, yeah, hold that up. The thing is, is that, you know, this is still, it was like, people, even in fire camp, were kind of clapping in a sense, and at one time, this donut hole, like I say, 10,000 acres is a good piece of country. And the thing is, is they're still, it's still kind of here, and it's still working its way, so you still may see smoke, you still may see columns. So, keep that in mind, it's still working its way away from the line. My thing is to get it away from the line, get the wolf away from the door. So, up here, it's been holding, and it's been doing a very good job, and a lot of our firefighters are right in this area here. As we come across and we're working into this area, there's a whole string of roads and all this kinds of stuff, and they've been working hard on this area here, out towards Cherry Lake and trying to hold this on 3-0-1. A lot of that's holding, and then, there's a lot of steep, steep ground out there. Many of you people, I'm from this country also, and many of you people know how steep it is out there, and I'm assuming that many of you know that. So, they're out here and they're working out in this area. By the way, currently, there's 3,300 firefighters on the line, or working on the fire, basically. Some of these guys, like myself, are in camp and listening to the radio and worrying about a bunch of other stuff. So, this is still working out here in Cherry Creek. The good thing about that is many people here in this county know, what do you got up here?
Rock.
Yeah, I'm banking on that. There's a lot of rock out there, and this thing is hitting some of that rock and we're using it. So, as we come back around Cherry Creek and we come out into this area, we've got, believe it or not, we've got a small team, a couple of small teams out there, four of them, four 10-person crews out there. But they're very, very effective, and what they're doing is a lot of tactics of tying stuff to rock to rock to rock and letting it come to there and get into the line so that, you know, where there's fuel, where there's stuff that will be burning, that'll just, it can't go by the rock, and we're just tying them and using that rock as our lines. And that's working here. But, there's a lot of fire out there, too. So, as you come into, through Lake Eleanor and all that, you get back over here between Lake Eleanor and Hetchy-Hetchy, by the way, I flew this yesterday so I can talk very sound about where these things are. We were working helicopters over here and all that. Now, I got to tell you something, it is very, very, very dry out here. This morning, the relative humidity, the amount of moisture in the air and all that, this morning, at 0.60, when we're briefing the crews and all that, was 16%. That's low. You know, when you go, it can only get worse from there, you know, so that's today, that's what happened today. The other part about that condition is the wind was starting out this morning, coming out from the southeast and blowing this way. The meteorologist tells us that this thing is going to do a 360. It's going to blow from here, it's going to come from the south, it's going to go from the southwest, it's going to come from the west, it's going to come from the northwest, north, and you kind of get my idea here, right? It's all the way around and blowing into everybody's face. So, the fire is getting a big test, you got a 250,000 acre fire. You got a fire that's, today, is $96 million. So, that was just a sideline. As we come back around here, as most people know, the Hetchy-Hetchy reservoir is very steep. We show black there, but I tell you, the black is like using the lake, but there's still a lot of fire along the edge of this here. And in fact, as my operations people just got, were calling me, I was getting some updates as I was coming here, there's still some fire in here, and it's working down in here, and we're working some, we're getting resources up there to protect some of the structures and all that, and the power lines down here in this area here. Okay, so this is called, this is November and Papa is the kind of, where that we'd use, but this is basically, our idea is to hold this on the Tioga Road and go direct, stay right against the fire, and come up here and tie this back to the Tioga Road. That's the road that goes to White Wolf and all that, coming off of the Buck Meadows Road, they tell me not to use that, because most people know, but I'm thinking I'm talking to my local folks. So, it's going down to Big Oak Flat down there, the road going to White Wolf is the one that we're trying to hold. Currently, there are, as we speak, there's probably 20 spots that blew right over here in this corner here, and they're trying to pick those up. But the wind is in their face, it's very, very difficult, they can't fly helicopters in there because there's too much smoke. So, we're putting a whole bunch of resources, crews and engines and all that, right over here, and starting to make this a priority so we can try to pick this stuff up here. So, this is still, we're still coming around here, as we come back into Rain Flat, and we start working our way back towards the west, this is looking pretty good. In fact, we've been working with the county and working with a lot of cooperators and all that, the Cal 5 Forest Service, Park Service, all these folks, and they want to get a lot of the folks back in their houses, get people back. We're currently working on getting people back into Aspen Meadows, we're currently working on getting people back into Evergreen, we have opened up the 120 road, we snagged it, we tried to make that all safe, everybody was working together to try to get those things back, so we're trying to get back to normal. You're probably tired of the fire.
You sure are tired.
Well, you got a little ways to go. That's the real deal, that's, you know, I'm telling the truth. Now, the other thing is, the other job is to start doing suppression, so, all this is looking good, and what we're trying to do is get this back in a condition to where, when do the rains come, right? You get a rain in September, then you get a rain in mid-October, I know for a fact, because if you look at Mount Elizabeth weather, it'll tell you that about October 15th, you're going to get a rain. I can guarantee, well, I don't want to guarantee it, but I can tell you that you're likely to get some rain. But the thing, the point is, is to get this thing into a condition here, at least on those lines, that we don't get runoff and grills and all that kind of stuff, too. So, that's just as important. Susan scouts, the forest supervisor is my boss on a lot of this, and wants to get some of this stuff done. So, as the fire, when the fire, when everybody was working on the fire and the thing was a lot more active, I mean, it was probably just a bunch of smoke here, they built this line up along here, and so we started on that today. Anybody know what happened today?
No.
Okay, I will tell you. Thank you. It's, we put a bunch of masticators up in this country and all this kinds of thing here, and we started working that with some dozers and trying to put that back into a condition to where it would stand rain and all that kinds of stuff, and we had dozer crews and masticators. But one of the transports started fire up there. Masticator chew stuff up, it just kind of munches it up and all that kind of thing. It's just got some heads on it. So, you know, this is, I'm just laying on the line, that's what we did. We had about a four acre fire, got a whole bunch of assets, believe me, we've launched the aircraft, there's a whole bunch of folks going over there and picked up a four acre fire about right here, like we need one, right? I get it, but you know what, there was no ill intention of that, obviously, and all that stuff. Hit that very hard, and then they had another 200 by 200 spot from that thing. The point is, it's very, very dry out there, very, very dry, 16% and all that. So, we're moving off of that, we stopped all that, and then, we still need to go back and do some rehab, and I think we're going to get closer to the fire and start it here somewhere. So, again, the condition of this thing is not necessarily that we're still, you're going to still see columns, you're going to still see smoke and all that kind of stuff. A lot of this is getting interior. Some of the priority now is going to be out here on the Tioga Road and trying to catch it, keep this thing back over to the west of Highway 120, the Tioga Road, and try to keep this thing in bay. We are working on these areas right here, is some of the highest concern right here. That is updated.
I'm sorry, I can't see red on red, so it's great for those who can, but could you also give some geographical?
This right here is some of our concern here, you can see my hand, I bet.
I bet you I can.
And then this here. And then this is where the spots are, right over here. I'm using technology, sorry. Okay. Do we open it, you want to? Okay, this is usually the time when we open up some questions.
Is there a reason why you're only using hand lines on the western, on the eastern part there in Yosemite? And where are the locations of the giant trees that they're concerned about?
The sequoias?
Giant sequoias.
The Tuolumne Grove is down, I got to look at my friends from the park that come over here, and that's this right here, right, Gary? So, that's more into here, is where the?
We have the Merced Grove, Tuolumne Grove, and the Rockefeller?
Get up here and point at it here, my man. I remember Gary walking around Yosemite National Park and also been here for a while. Okay. Down here along, I'll get oriented, Big Oak Flat Road, we have the Merced Grove of the large trees, big trees, and then we have the Tuolumne Grove off of highway, or off of what everybody thinks 120 is, is Tioga Road. And then there's also the Rockefeller Grove of Sugar Pine. Those three have been protected well, and really, very little fire got into that, and that's being patrolled right now and mopped up.
And why are we only using hand lines?
I got that. This here is a good anchor right here, which we don't want, well, one, you're in the park, and you're kind of doing, and two, this is being very effective with the hand line.
Is there a restriction for mechanized equipment or something?
Well, yeah, there is, there's some criteria to that.
Questions?
The question was, is there any, is there criteria using dozers in the park? Yes. You know, and, but again, the hand line is being very effective on this, and the crews have been doing a very good job right here in that corner. You know, one thing I want to do or say is, people in here, in some of this area, the fuels are so dry, and I challenged them because I don't really know the answer, but they've been stepping to stump holes, and they've been getting burned, and we've been flying them to Fresno, to a burn center. You know, yeah. And it's, and some of those, you can't tell on a lot of those, in the stump, when you got a lot of burn area, you don't know where you're stepping. So, they're going out there and trying to secure the line and mopping this area up, and they're getting hurt. So, we are taking our time and evaluating this thing and wanting to let it cook down, burn down and all that stuff, but a lot of heat is held in those stump holes. We got nine injuries to date, I own four. That's not good. So, yeah, we're working this, and we're holding this. Other questions, sir?
What percentage of the area inside the perimeter has burned?
Oh, in here. And the question was, what percentage of this area is burned? You know, when those bear guys get there, because they're way smarter than me about this and that estimate, now, I took my flight yesterday, I can tell you that, and, you know, you know, when you're old, when you're telling these kids, like, hey, I was here in 1987 and I was fighting the fire, and that was 27 years ago. It is not like 1987 fire, it didn't nuke it as much. There's a lot of mosaic in here, and I wouldn't paint a picture that this is pretty, by no means, and I don't mean to, but I can tell you, there's a lot of places that it's, it didn't, it burned the underneath, but it didn't burn the trees, and then there's other places that, what I term as it nuked, you know, took a lot out, and you saw the columns, and you can only imagine the heat. So, but all in all, out of the 250,000 acres, there are places where there's still trees, there's live clumps of various of trees. Other questions, sir?
How effective are the airdrops if you have a heavy canopy?
Well, you know what, a lot of times, the airdrops that we're using now is using the type, are heavy helicopters, if the helicopters use a lot of water, and they're very effective. And they can get down there and kind of hold right there and just drip, you know, almost point drop. So, very, very, we got 12 helicopters sitting on the deck right now, and we've been flying the heck out of them, to be honest with you. Sir?
Yes, the drones, are they still up?
Nope. Not, the drone was good, the drone.
The RPA.
The RPA, the drone was, they, on this fire, they used a drone to overlook some of the area and all that. When I got here, I think the drone did its time, I think it did its work prior to me getting here, to where I didn't think that we really needed it at that time. So, it's gone. I can use helicopters and other assets, and I do not want my firefighters to bank on aircraft for their safety. I want them to have their own lookouts and all that stuff up there in the park. Other questions? Oh, Pam?
Because the helicopter water was such, the droplet of water was so effective, how come we didn't have 12 or 15 helicopters on the queue at that point to stop the fire before it became this large?
At the very beginning?
When it started.
When it started.
We got air tankers and all that stuff, none of that was planned.
Okay, hang on, Jesus. Let me try to rephrase the question. The question was, is if the helicopters are so effective at the very, if the helicopters are so effective, how come we didn't have a whole bunch of them at the start of this, at the start of the fire? Is that the question? I look at my friend, the, you want me to answer that? The availability of them. I can tell you that when this fire started on that Saturday, I was on the Clamath up north on a fire, using helicopters. I can tell you that there's some of my friends that were just south of me using helicopters. So, not all the helicopters were available because there was other fires that they were on and committed to. I don't know how many, when you ask, well, how many were available, I can't tell you that, I don't know that. But I can tell you that there were other incidents where the helicopters were being No, no, that guy back there.
I was wondering about how, to what extent is San Francisco cooperating with their watershed around Hetchy-Hetchy? I hear rumors that you're not allowed bulldozers or fire retardant, and even that you can't dip into the Hetchy-Hetchy reservoir, is any of that true?
There's some truth to that, but the question, the question was, is you can't use bulldozers near Hetchy-Hetchy, and there's some, what was the other part?
Retardant limitations.
And then dipping sites, or where you can dip, mostly, I would say, where can you dip and where you can you not. And some of my bosses in the park, you know, there's some areas here where we can dip. But you know what, I can dip if I need it, if I absolutely need it, and I need it like right now, and it's to protect firefighters or to protect structures, I can use it. I got the green light to do that.
How about bulldozer and fire retardant?
You aren't going to use no bulldozer in this country. I can guarantee you that. It's not that type of country. So, I wouldn't be an advocate of that anyhow, even if they would let me.
Fire retardant?
Fire retardant, fire retardant is again, one of the things that we can't, I'm telling you, the helicopters are being very effective, but fire retardant is one that is not really, really wanted, but you could, you know, in, at times, I would have to ask permissions to do it.
Would that not have been a good question to ask, the permission to gain that in the beginning, even if it was dropped into the scenic wilderness of Tuolumne River? Because if you go out there now, it's not very scenic.
Right. The, at the very beginning of the fire.
Where it started would have been a good spot.
Okay, hang on here, backseat, I took this thing on Wednesday, you know, kind of a thing. You know what, I can't, some of that, you know what, and I'm going to tell you, it's one of those things where, you know, you're hitting it with retardant here and there, I mean, some of the things, I don't know how many retardant planes are available and all that kind of stuff, the aircraft and all that. And I get the question, but I, you know, paint, I'll tell you this, retardant's not always the answer. You know, it's not, you got to get boots on the ground to get there and to fight the fire.
You can't get hand crews into the country where that started.
Well, then you got to at one time or another, because you're not just going to check that with the aircraft, I'll tell you that. Uh, but, yep, you.
My question's for Susan.
Oh, cool.
Susan, I went on your website today, I seen that you guys are listing the causes of this fire as a hunter. And my question is, what evidence do you have that it is a hunter?
Unfortunately, I can't answer that because I was not part of the investigation team. And when they have a full report, then that will become available. I don't know, I actually don't have any expertise in investigating fires. I don't even think we have anybody from law enforcement here that was a part of that. So, I'm sorry, we just, you know, our answer is always, it's under investigation, they released that piece of information a couple of days ago, and that's what we all know at this point.
Looking at your website, the origin of the fire is very remote and very hard to access, and my question is, did this hunter apparel from a helicopter to get where this thing started?
I don't, I can't answer that, I don't.
I've traveled that, that patch numerous times. No one in their right mind is going to go there hunting.
It is very, very, very steep.
Very unlikely that it started by a hunter.
Mm-hmm.
Or a pilot. And I think the fact it's been blamed on a hunter is part of this little propaganda that could have happened, just my opinion. That's right.
How many people actually go out to those parts of the woods and make a living out there and do anything?
What was the question?
Well, some folks don't believe that this fire could have been started by a hunter. And I can assure you that our investigators have no reason to find a cause other than a factual one, so I, you know, I'm just going to say, they're going to do their best work. They're experts in fire investigation, they go and investigate every fire that we have on national forests, and that is their determination at this point.
The only person that may have been there may have been a potpourri, because they were the only ones that wanted to get that far from the roads, but I'm just saying, it is not a hunter. We're going to have to pick somebody else to blame it on.
Thank you.
So, we can get compensated for all of our losses that we got.
Sir?
Yes, on the bear team. On the bear team, you have representatives of the Miwok tribe on the bear team to establish whether Native American cultural resources were affected by the fire.
I just happen to work for the tribe here at Miwok, and I could assure you, there's going to probably be some people on there, like the Reba Fuller's and all those folks that'll be attached to the, to the team. She, I can assure you, if you know Reba Fuller, that she will be attached to the team, if you know her. I can guarantee that. So, what was the, what was, I'm sorry? What was the question? The question, I'm sorry, the question was, is if the, if the tribe, if the Miwok band of, if the Miwok band of Indians would have some representation on some of the bear team, and, and rehabs, and all that kind of thing. And I mentioned a person's name, I mentioned a friend of mine, I worked there, and I mentioned a friend of my, my, that I work with, Reba Fuller, and told him, I guarantee you, she would be involved, and if you know the lady, I would know that you would know, that I would guarantee that, and it's a good bet. Okay, another question, ma'am?
Yes, I was wondering if any of the timber that's burning is going to salvage before it rots?
Great question.
Destroyed, if salvaged before it rots, will they be able to get it out before it rots?
The question was whether or not any of the timber would be salvaged out of there before it rots. I can assure you, we are already thinking about what that putting-together team, there are laws that we have to abide by. One is our National Environmental Policy Act, which is a procedural act before we can sell any timber. So, we will go through that, we will push to make it as expedited as legally possible, and we absolutely intend to look at the whole watershed, and see what might be salvageable, and what might not be. There is a lot of really steep country, like folks talked about over here, and, you know, if the diameter of trees on those slopes are too small to pay for the ability to get them out, you know, we're not going to salvage everywhere, but we're going to really try and do it where it makes sense, in the timeframe that we have, to be able to get it to the mill before it loses value.
Another question, sorry. Question is, are you, what procedures and methods are you going to use to prevent Manzanita going into the burned areas?
Okay, that's probably a bear question. Can I bother Todd to come up? I know he was here. So, bear is our, our burned area emergency response, they changed their name a few years ago, I wanted to make sure I got it right. And that's exactly one of the things that they will work on in their next, probably two to four week assessment, figuring out how you get seed ground, down on the ground, how quickly, you know, where are the important places to put that.
Was the question? Yeah, last question?
Hi, my name's Todd Ellsworth, and I'll be heading up the, the burned area emergency